Welcome, welcome everybody here to regular reading of the Hibbing Public Schools Wednesday, August 7th, 2024 at 3:30 PM, Central daylight time or standard time. And with that, we'll move on to a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to three public comment, Superintendent Rick.
And we have none, Mr. Chair.
We have none. With that, we got a bit of a change to the, we're going to add a thing after public comment, it's going to go in between three and four in the minutes. It's right after the public comment, it's going to be addendum one A, and I'll turn that over to Superintendent Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And I'm going to, in a second, turn it over to Mr. Kazar, but we had a big push here at the end to try to get our transportation contract completed, and it was just finalized really last night. We need to start the school year with a, with a plan, a transportation plan, so we brought this to you at the last minute, and I apologize. But Alex, would you like to tee it up a little bit for Mr. Watson?
Sure. Yeah, so we, Mr. Watson helped us. He actually did the bulk of the work. I just listened and consulted with him, but honestly, there's been some changes with the bus contractors that are available here from town, so we kind of just took a whole new, big picture, look at it, looked at routes, and we talked about a lot of different things at a lot of different meetings, and so thank you to Mr. Watson for all his work. But I'll let him explain the technical details of that.
Absolutely. So Tom, can you hear us?
I can.
Well, welcome. I'm going to turn your volume up just a little. You got it, Alex? He's going to turn your volume up just a little bit, but you, you go right ahead, Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson.
Mr. Chairman, you know, they could just call me Tom or Tommy or something else.
Whatever you wish.
The, good afternoon. This has been a rather interesting day. I had to go, both of you know, I live over by Emily, Minnesota, and so I had to go to the Twin Cities, to the hospital and have some work done, and I just got back here about half hour ago, so it's gonna, I tried to stay balling where law enforcement would not be happy with. What I wanted to do, we got a letter, the district got a letter from Dustin Davidson of Shubat in November, November 20, 2023, indicating that he would not continue the present contract, which you approved for, for Shubat and Tactran in 2021, indicating that he had costs and that sort of thing, which he needed some additional revenue to pay for. That fourth year, which would be school year 24, 25, in that original contract, would have paid him a 2% increase. He is not different from a lot of these bus contractors. They got hit with a couple things that the school districts got hit with. For example, the two mandates for family leave, they got hit with some unemployment, unemployment laws, et cetera. So they had some increased costs that certainly they, they don't control anymore than the district can control, can control that. Second thing we ran into was Dustin, who I think was pretty familiar with the fact that over the next couple of months, that the other contractor in Hibbing, along with the contracts, same contractor who had the contracts in Nashua, Kewatin, Greenway, ran afoul of the Tasci District Court, and his companies were placed in receivership. He lost the business. They had been liquidated to pay some, some bills. As of the first, well, roughly the first part of March of 24, NKT Transportation essentially went out of business, and the receiver hired Dustin at Shubat on a separate contract to manage that Shubat contract with Hibbing to complete the school year. And so he did that for about three months. But I think, Rick, that could be fair to say that that worked pretty well, having Dustin do that in terms of being the administrator of the, of the dress patient services for those last 90 days of the school year.
No, absolutely, Tom, and I just, I think the other thing, just to reiterate, is that back in, in early 24, 2024, back January, February, we were, we were very, very concerned about what we were going to do for transporting students for the remainder of the school year. And there, you know, we had never gotten to that point. We were fortunate, but our partners in Nashua, Kewatin, were looking at just going virtual for the remainder of the school year at one point, because they were just unsure if they were going to have a contractor. We, we knew we had Dustin, and we were hoping that he could pick up the capacity, which he did. And yes, it was, it worked out very well for us. It could have been a much different situation without Dustin's willingness to take that on.
And part of that, just to add to that, part of that situation, and I won't believe that a lot of the transactions were terribly deep unless somebody has any questions, but Tactran had been purchased a year and a half ago by a NKT Transportation based in Nashua. Purchased it from Sandy Fina in December of 2022. And so the receiver then became an interesting player to deal with. That one flew into that. But the receiver is basically somebody who was appointed by the court to manage a business that's faltering, let's say. And generally, what they're trying to do in this case is liquidate the company so that they can pay the bills, with all the different creditors involved. Anyhow, when we got the notice from Dustin in November of '23, it amounted to about a 20% increase in cost, that he wanted for school year '24, '25, and that would obviously exceed by a considerable sum, the 2% we had in that original contract for the same year. In other words, he wanted 20%, you had already had a contract with him for the fourth year at 2%. When the receivership thing came along, we kind of dropped the contract and talked to Dustin about picking things up like Rick described, but we decided neither one knew where that, where any of this was going, and so in terms of trying to negotiate a contract at that time was yet virtually impossible, because it was, the balls were all in the air, so to speak, at that point. Along about June, we started engaging Dustin in the conversation about it, addressing his question that was presented to the district in November, that he needed to have a revise, revision to that fourth year of the contract. Essentially, what you have in front of you is what I had recommended to support the district, and also had tried to present that, or did present that to Dustin. State of Minnesota adopted a new law relative to student transportation contracts three years ago, that allows a school board exclusively, with its exclusive authority, to actually extend the contract up to 10 years. At the end of the school year last year, we would have completed three, so there would have been seven years remaining that we could consider. One of those years, namely '24, '25, Dustin wanted this revision of 20%. I talked with Rick and, and Alex, considerable about approach. Are there cases where we can experience some kind of savings, can be reducing and combining some routes, what's going to happen post the demise of Tactran, et cetera? The advantage we had in looking at the sixth year, or adding the six years to this particular proposal that you've got in front of you, was the fact that I recommended we tie it to the newest state aid formula approach that was approved by the Department of, or by the legislature two years ago, in '24. I'm sorry, '23, that had an inflation factor included in the basic aid formula that allows the Department of Education to actually look at plus or minus 1%, over and above whatever has been enacted from the legislature. As part of that discussion, Alex and I presented to Dustin the fact that we couldn't go with 20% increase for the next year, as you can probably agree, but that we would like to look at the possibility of extending his commitment for purposes of good business, and the fact that he would have six years of collateral in that contract with the district, meaning that he's under contract with the district for the next six years. And thinking that his banker, obviously his banker's going to be happier knowing he's got a six-year commitment than he would have if he only had one year remaining on his contract. We presented that to him. The old years, those, that would be the last four years, so that would be years seven, eight, nine, and 10, and in terms of years, what that means is that would be 2006, 2007 school year on to 2009, 10. We recommended we tie that to the new basic aid formula law, which allows for a minimum of 2%, a maximum of 3%. And the difference between the, the two and the three is going to be an inflation adjustment determined by the state, communicated to school districts by the commissioner. We suggested that Dustin might be interested in having the length. He did. And so in this proposal, I'm going to go to the, back to the old years, in those last four years, ending in school year 29, 2009, '29, 2030, he would be, have a contract, that'd be the 10th year that he would have been under contract in this current arrangement, and the increase in those last four years would be a minimum of 2%, maximum of 3%. I would be afraid going into those old years without something like that, because these districts are, I mean, these contractors are experiencing some significant major increases in buying buses because of the prices of steel and labor costs and all kinds of other things. We then negotiated with him for years, what would be years five and six. So that would be school year '25, '26, and '26, '27. We came to a agreement on the first of those six years, which is where he wanted that 20%, he settled on 7.2. And the increase cost at 7.2 as compared to the 2% that was approved two years ago, is the fact that he is faced with increasing driver wages by probably about $3 to $4 an hour. In other words, their $18, $19 is up to '22, '23. He's got to pay the two mandates that were recently enacted last, in 2023. The parts, just the parts on repairing a bus because of prices of steel has, has gone up considerably, and new buses, for example, just to give you an example, five years ago, he would have paid about $110,000, maybe $105 for a new bus, one of the conventional 77 passengers. Today, the order on those, if you can get them within a year, the order on those is about $135 to $140 for the very same vehicle. So the recommendation in front of you, oh, one other thing, we had him take a look at the number of routes and some of the service quantities. For the record, when we approved the contract in 2021, the two contractors were operating 21 regular ed routes, those were the conventional routes with the big buses. They were running about a dozen or more special ed vans. Each one of the yellow bus routes is roughly a $60,000 a year cost. So two years ago, over the last two years, that would have been '22, '23, they reduced that number 21 down to 19 routes. That was about $120,000 that I referred to in my letter. This past year, they started the year with 17 routes, in other words, reducing two more, completed the year with 17. Dustin now having the opportunity to look at all the routes of Tactran, along with his own at Shubat, has concluded that a 16th route can be eliminated, so in my letter, I'm referring to about $64,000 of savings. And it's, it's terribly possible, if you're in the month of August, as they've conducted final routing discussions, and whatever with Todd and themselves, and I think they were doing some of that this morning, there is the possibility they could reduce that, that number of routes without impacting kid ride types or anything like that. It's possible they could eliminate the 16th route down to 15 routes. I talked with Rick about that, and if there's any doubt, would be the idea of probably running that 16th route for the next school year and look at that 15 reduction, or the 16th reduction in school year '25, '26. Anyhow, the, the thing that's, maybe in the proposal then is there's this 7% increase for this coming year, there's a 4.5% increase in '25, '06, and then there's four years tied into that new inflation adjusted basic aid formula, which would be either a minimum of two or maximum of three. The interesting part of all that is if you combine those increases at 2% for those old four years, the total package increases are basically about 21%. Even my, Dustin wanted 20% first year only. If it becomes 3% middle and two in those old four years, then that overall increase is about 24%. In other words, the good news in this, you had him under contract for the next six years, years '26, '07, '10, '2003, '2008, '09. He's under contract. You hold the option to extend the contract through that period. What you'd know is that he wasn't going to get paid less than two and more than three. In other words, we prepare that discussion now. I can assure you, had we done, if we had done this with a two, three-year term only, we would be looking at considerable increases in those years, and you'd be back having another round of discussion for those last three years, and you'd probably be starting at, what else? Maybe it's been 6, 7% my first year. So we, we avoid that. Bottom line is, in that letter, the letter I wrote with you, basically, all the services that you know are going to be provided to the students are the same. Ride lengths, we presume, are going to be pretty much what they have been. In other words, one of the conversation items we've had with Dustin is, we're not interested in dropping a bus route and adding an hour to the kids' ride time. So part of that is to be seen here now when the commissioner's rounding here in August. I think the language on the new inflation adjusted state aid formula is in the, from the bottom, especially the bottom of the, what's in the addendum one to the contract. What you have in front of you is an addendum to the basic contract that was first approved in June of 2021, and this one now just extends the term and provides rates. These contracts are called price agreements, so in extending the contract, we can't extend it without getting a commitment on, on price, for example, which we have with him. Alex asked me a good question when I was driving this afternoon, and that is, does he have an escape clause of some kind? The answer is, all these contracts have to have language in it that allows either party to cancel. But the way the language reads on all the options, the contract can be extended at the district's request, and it could require mutual approval, obviously, but the district really holds the, holds the options. And the prices are, as I just described. The term of the contract and all the rest is very similar now to what Nashua, Kewatin, Greenway got with the new bus company that came to town, called Home or Bus on Mantego. And the rates are very comparable, and of course, they are all, both companies are competing for local labor and drag expenses. And the big news at the moment is, they all three have adequate numbers of drivers, which is actually a pretty good thing. But the drivers in all three districts are going to be, have pay increases starting here with September. Any questions that I can answer at this point? We tried to work really hard to get this thing in this particular shape, that we're paying a little more on the front end, but 7%, I'd rather see us have something less, but we are taking it away when we look at those last four, five years. We get right to us to meeting Rick's requirement of a $300,000 reduction in cost.
We exceeded that, I believe, but that's, thank you, Tom.
So I have a question. I think at one of our last meetings, we talked about our state aids for transportation, and we did want to exceed it to a great extent. Has this accomplished that at least for this coming school year?
Do you want to? If some correctly don't know, it comes with these reduction in routes, it gets us closer.
Yeah, and what I can, what I can do, like, said to Alex, I can actually price this thing out a little better in some detail now that if you approve this, and so he'll have some idea how it fits into your '24, '25 budget, and I think that's part of that answer. Because the, the other thing that happens, like, for example, with this 7% increase, it also raises the rates on special ed routes by that same 7%, but 90-plus percent of that 7% gets reimbursed. And so I don't have that math right in front of me, but when I, in my, in my report, the amounts I show in there are primarily on the regular level buses, because the district cost on any of that special ed is going to trim out to be, whatever, the state aid piece is 90 plus, 95%. So if we pay $250 a day, I'm sure you should do the math more carefully, but if we did $300 a day, about $15 is coming out of the property tax under your system, and 85 is coming out of state aid.
Everything we calculated through Director Watson, the daily routes to and from school? Yes, we've achieved that. It's the extracurricular that throws us over the top. That's where, that's where we end up dipping into other general funds just to pay the bill.
And I apologize, I didn't get this, I didn't have time to.
We apologize for short notice, but again, it was a last-minute agreement.
So is Shubat also going to be our provider for extracurriculars?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we able to get to the booster club stuff? Boost stuff, give some better money into that, because anyway, it's, obviously, it's a factor of budget, raising money for a lot of things.
And they do. I mean, they, they help with that extra piece, like, you know, for the extra, to take the coach bus, to do the, they've never tipped into, or stepped into just the school bus to help us, it's always the extra. But I know that Director, Athletic Activities Director, excuse me, Turner is here, and he's going to talk a little bit later during the reports, but he's also looking at that, and he's been working with Todd, some of our trips. There's some that we just can't avoid. I mean, conference-wise, we have to travel where we travel. So that'd be another discussion, do we step back from the Lake Superior Conference, get back to the Iron Range Conference, and so then our transportation stays more local? But that, again, that, that's at least a two-year heads-up, Keith, to do something that just can't happen overnight, to get in and out, it's, it's a process. But, but he is looking at that to try to clean up the extracurricular, but it's, we're going lots of distances with, with our teams. We've traveled a lot.
Can I finish one point?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like last year, the hockey, you think that our team was scheduled to have a game with both of you at half on the road, mathematically, that's like before. Last year, it was skewed, where they were, I don't remember, like 15 on the road and five on the road, or something along those lines, it was just a huge differential. And that was a significant cost. And they had played, they were playing all over the, the majority of the state.
I guess, clarify a little bit, I guess, Mr. Turner can answer this. That schedule was probably planned two years ago?
So our, our schedules are kind of like two years off.
Right.
And if you look at our schedules now, they're a little more balanced. We're, we're trying to keep them. So hockey plays 24 games, and it will be, it'll be a little bit better, where it'll be almost 12 and 12. But then we had to make some changes this year, because we had some things that, that hockey day and some other things that came about. So, but even with basketball, the first year I got here, volleyball, I had three home games, did a restaurant, so now that's, that's a little bit better too. But every year, we're trying to make sure that those are.
And I guess, just to make clear too, you mentioned that hockey day in Minnesota, Hibbing is playing it, which I don't think a lot of people know that right now. So that's a great plus for that program, for the school. But the question I have is, when we decided to do this rearrangement with all schools, and the teachers and the class, one of the points that was brought up is we were going to eliminate bus routes, correct?
Yep.
So is this fall in place with what we talked about when we did the reorganization?
I think it does. I mean, if you go back to the start of the '23, '24 school year, we'll be down six bus routes from that point, and with possibly an additional bus route being reduced this school year.
Yeah, 21.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, I was going to say, we started with 21, actually, at that point.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
They were down to 16, possibly, probably 15.
Yep. So yes, and, and the sped routes is another, I think, key component to this. You know, like Tom said, we have vans that are running all over the community, and principals met today with transportation to shore that up. And we're actually, in other years, we've, we've waited until the teachers have come back, special education teachers, to plan those routes, and it's always kind of a catastrophe at the first week in school, because we just haven't had a lot of time to plan it. So we're actually going to pull our sped teachers in before the start of school year, get those routes assigned, so hopefully we can be more efficient, is the idea. We'll have more time to plan, rather than running one van for one student, we try to combine those routes to more than one student. But a lot of those are just one-off, strange times, kid might have to leave Greenhaven at noon, and it's the only student that's leaving, it just happens sometimes, but.
So the reductions in the bus routes should hopefully offset the increased costs that we're in, that ended up paying out the seven and a half.
Yes, yes.
Do we know, does Shubat, number one, do they have enough bus drivers right now?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And do we know, like, what their inventory on buses look like as far as new, old, you know, I think I remember getting a lot of messages about a certain bus member constantly being broken down. You know, I'm just wondering, do they have reliable buses where they're closer to being new rather than being old?
Yes. Yes. And maybe, Tom, you could answer that because you were, you were involved in some of the buses that Dustin bought from TacTran, and I believe he only bought quality buses or buses for parts, and his fleet is fairly new.
I can, I can kind of follow up, interrupt you, Tom. Looking at a building that Schubert is renting, uh, it's for sale, we're looking at it, and I can tell you firsthand that every bus he has in that warehouse, storage, is basically brand new. And the ones he bought from TacTran, uh, the old ones have been pretty much, as you mentioned, discarded, and anything that they can use for parts are being used for that. So I would say that every one of those buses is good.
And they have, I mean, they have to pass inspection. They have, there's all that part of it too, but just newer looking buses, I think as a, as a company, Schubert had a newer fleet than TacTran did. So those, those older buses, those, those bold-nosed buses that you see around town, like from the seventies when we went to school, we don't have those buses anymore. That was with the TacTran fleet, so.
Okay. And I may be speaking out of school, but to spin off on that, while we're in the summer with our event that was going on, I think Dustin has a mechanic that comes up here also and, you know, works on maintaining buses.
Yep.
How much does the transportation non-public school students impact us or expenses?
I've, I've don't know a cost, and we've never costed that out, but we, we do provide transportation for all of our non-public students.
Because it's a lot.
Yes.
But what, I mean, what does it really cost?
The impact of that, yeah, it's, so it's within our existing route structure, and it's within our, I mean, we, we aren't making huge changes to accommodate those students. We have a stop, basically. Here's the stop, this is where, where we pick your student up and they'll have to get their student to that stop for some reason, usually it's a couple of blocks. But yes, it's, I don't know what, you know, to break it out per student, per dollar, I don't have that number, I don't know if you've ever done anything like that, Tom, but we transport many non-public students, so.
Here's what, here's what happened as a result of this particular proposal. Um, for example, if there's a seven percent increase, part of the state aid to reverse in the district of us non-public kids will also increase. In other words, it's based on the cost of, of transporting a public school kid. So what we wind up doing is, for example, you're spending roughly a million dollars, a well, a well over a million dollars on just regular routes. And, um, if we added, you know, 50 kids to that, um, your state aid will go up as a percentage of, um, you know, the increased costs in transporting those kids. Now, the difficulty that we get into is that you get 4.66% included in your basic aid formula, which is the state aid for student transportation in the public school. That's built into the basic aid formula. Um, and in addition to that, then you get some aid for what's called transportation sparsity, in other words, the distribution of kids across, you know, your district. Um, generally, in this case, there's not even any buses added because they're transporting non-public kids. In other words, they're accommodated with the bus that's already in service transporting children to, you know, K-12 schools in the public school. Um, and so whether there's one more non-public kid or one less public kid, it's not changing your cost at all, so they'll like airplane, once the airplane digs off, if all the seats are filled, they're not going to be filled, but none lands either. And that's kind of the same situation here. Um, so he's accommodating that. Um, one of the things that I would, I would probably be interested in talking to Todd about is that, um, you know, kind of putting the, the screws to some of this conversation a little bit, which is to say, don't just accept the fact that, you know, Dustin's going to do it this way, because really the district should be telling Dustin what it wants to do. Um, and, and I don't mean that to be, you know, playing hardball, but I'm saying, don't always just accept that, you know, that's the way it's going to be, because three years ago, we had 21 routes, for God's sakes, when you did business that way, and now we're down to 16. We have John and Dustin and whatever, they'd say, well, you know, we need this many routes. And the fact of the matter is, we learned that we didn't need that many routes, and those five cost you probably in the neighborhood of about a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in a couple of years in there where you really didn't have to spend that money. We've taken that out of there.
So if I computed the numbers right, this reconfiguration that we talked about, I mean, it's approaching $400,000 in savings.
Yep.
And my other question, we talked about 4.66% of our state aid for transportation.
No, your basic aid formula, the whole package.
Oh, oh, oh.
4.66 of that package. I don't know what the individual aid amount is, now, uh, Alex can probably tell you, but it's like $7,500 per kid.
So do we.
4.66% of that is, is, is a state aid for busing.
And does that include a factor for non-public school students? Is there a factor or just based on our own ADM and whatever?
Yeah, you, you take your ADMs and they're regular school student ADMs, uh, and you divide that into the, your costs of regular transportation, you multiply that difference by the number of non-public school kids that you actually transport, not the ones that just happen to live close by, but they have to get their butts on the bus. Uh, and you multiply that by the number of non-public kids that, you know, are actually certified that, that you are transporting. That's your state aid for, to transport non-public kids. So this increased cost that we're talking about in, in regular ed, at seven percent for next year, it'll actually increase your non-public state aid as well.
So I want to back up a second, and we may not know the answer at this meeting, that's fine. Do we have any idea how much we spend on extracurricular busing a year?
Yeah, that's something I can find for sure.
I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
I think, I think the math that I had was, it was about almost 300,000, um, was your, um, trips, and that could be, that could be athletics as well as, uh, classroom trips. You know, rates for kids to, you know, take field trip are included in that number that I just gave you.
I'd like to make a point that, this is my own personal, if you look at this at seven and a half percent, a lot of people might think that Schubert is giving it to us, but I think if you look at it, he needs us as much as we need him. And when you look at the money and what we're saving over, it's kind of a washroom to look at it. So that seven and a half percent, I don't think we need to look at it as a big hit for right now because, and eventually in the future, we're going to recoup it. And if we didn't have him here, we'd really be in trouble.
And this doesn't tie us, even if we do the extension to 2930, that we still can't make adjustments in the routes.
Correct.
We can still add, and we can still reduce, that may have to happen, dump the road.
Yep, yep.
Our passion of language in the agreement, um, since 2021, the laws, or has the parties sit down every second year and discuss terms of the contract and any modifications they want to do, and routing is every year.
And if we're able to pick up more students from other districts, we might have to have another.
Well, and you know what, I feel like a broken record a little bit about what the board has talked about in the past, this is costing all our districts, and if there's any way we can work together, students are going to open enroll in and out, if we can work with our other districts to help transport students in both directions. But the other thing I think is important is, you know, I want to make sure people know that we've achieved a goal of reducing our transportation costs by reconfiguring, and I think it's important to, for the community, for our parents to know, because we're reducing the number of routes, does not mean we're reducing the radius for which kids can ride. Kids are going to ride the same, it's just the way the routes have been configured, so.
More efficient way of doing things.
Yes, I think, and you know what, I think it's going to be important, I mean, I've already got questions about, oh, what are the bus routes going to be now with the new school configuration? Whatever we can do, you know, we've always put the flyer out at the beginning of the school year, but anything we can do to help alleviate that uncertainty of parents, I think we should start, even if it's on our website and not more printed literature, we should get information out there, because, and I just appreciate Dustin and everything he does, I think, you know, to reiterate, it's a movement, he does a good job. And I don't think it was easy for him at the end of the last school year, so.
I mean, literally, Dustin, he, he came in and he saved the day, and Mark, he truly did. He came in and he saved the day, and, um, and he provided a service that was excellent. Like, there's, issues, issues that we had didn't, didn't arise out of Schubert, that's typically wasn't the, of course, there's some one-offs and things happen, drivers for different, but his, his service is just excellent.
So will we make a motion to accept it in? Are you making a motion? If I can, yes, I'd like to make a motion. Should have it, unless somebody has more questions. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the addendum, yeah.
I've actually got, I've got a motion, Mr. Egan, on the, on the back, on that second page, you know, I.
I didn't see that.
Reason I want you to use that is because I want the reference to the subdivision three, and that which gives the school board the authority to do what we're doing.
So I need to make a motion to recommend the findings to the motion to approve the contract. Is that correct?
Addendum one. You're approving the addendum one to the contract.
Right, yeah.
So is it this agenda item that was supposed to?
It would be, the, the motion would actually be, right, Tom has it written out for us that hits all those high points, so we might want to read that out loud and make sure that motion is, through the, through the camera, too.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum one to the student transportation agreement with Schubert Transportation Company, modifying the terms for 2024 to 2025, and extending the agreement for two contract years commencing with July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2027, with an option to extend for an additional three years contract consistent with Minnesota Stat U, section 123B dash 52, subsection one and three. Thanks, Tom.
Very, very good job.
Moved by Director Egan, supported by Director Poulter. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Alex, Rip, and Tom and Dustin for putting this together, so thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Full of same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can I make one, one last remark?
If it's pertinent.
It is pertinent.
Okay, go ahead.
Your superintendent in January called Alex and I together, and he indicated that we had to find $300,000 of cost savings, and he explained the fact that he thought for sure, having two contractors in the district was probably not as efficient as one with one. And he asked each one of them to go back to their respective organizations and take a hard look at where we could find savings and reductions and more efficient routing. We didn't count on the fact that a receivership pointed by Ataski District Court would actually intervene at that point, but I think Rick can be happy that, and, and I'm pleased with the perks that he took to, uh, charge us to get the job done. Uh, we just didn't count on one fool out of business, that's all.
Well, Tom, just so you know, that charge came from this board. The board directed me to find those savings, so I just was passing on the message.
And his, his contractor's coming up too, so he's.
That's great.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you as always, and, um, have a great rest of your meeting and day.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, thank you so much, Tom.
Okay, good conversations and discussions, but then we'll need to hand over administrative reports. I have to turn it over to Ben Rick, and we, directors.
You know what, I think over the course of summer, and it feels like we haven't been together for a long time, but like, there's PTOs and booster clubs, there've been so many of them doing good things in helping support our programs, but like, yesterday I thought it was kind of neat, the burger bash out here, besides being really good burgers, it was a group of coaches and parents, not affiliated with any one booster club or PTO, that came together, I think there were a couple of coaches and weight room personnel, um, to just do a fundraiser to help get some new equipment for the weight room, and they explained to me the kind of equipment, and I don't know what kind of equipment, but it sounded reasonable. And just to thank the, the people that made it happen and the community that supported it, they made, as of right now, almost $2,500, and they expect some more money to come in. So I think that community support and, you know, Director Poulter, what he's talking about with transportation, I mean, maybe there's ways we can be creative. So I just appreciate all the people that supported that.
Go ahead, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll turn it over to administrators.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Um, we have Mr. Turner here, would you like to come up, Mr. Turner? Uh, we've been having some conversations and been reached out to by a number of school districts about our co-ops, our support co-ops, and, um, we, we wanted to have a discussion with you, uh, to see if the direction that we're headed is, is something that you're interested in, or if you'd like to take a different route. So maybe you could just kind of summarize, Keith, where we've been the last couple of weeks, some of the conversations, and what we're thinking.
So we, we have been approached by a couple of schools to add co-ops, and right now, at this point, uh, I've communicated to ADs and the other administrators at those schools that we're not going to add any more co-ops, we're going to honor all the co-ops we have in place right now for, uh, this coming academic year. Uh, we also have looked at, I, I talked to the Minnesota High School League, and, uh, this would pertain mostly to Assumption and VCA. We can have seventh and eighth graders participate, uh, but as long as they're just playing junior high, all right? So we don't have to have a co-op agreement in place, but they cannot, and, and this will come about if we have a really good, uh, seventh or eighth grade runner, uh, that may, uh, be running really good times, but they can only participate in junior high. They can't participate at the varsity level, because their, uh, academic status as far as eligibility doesn't start until nine through 12. So we don't have to have an agreement in place.
Does that affect our tier levels at all, or not?
It, so that doesn't affect our tier levels if we just use the, we, we will have an agreement, but it won't be a co-op. Uh, and right now, if we were to bring, uh, some schools in, uh, in the area, I'll just say football, or if we were looking at, uh, basketball or tennis, uh, that would affect our tier level. That would, that would move us up a class.
Thank you.
So, uh, the other thing, uh, too, that we're looking at, if we have students and, and I'm going to say this out loud, and I know I'll get some backlash, if our coaches can coach kids, uh, then they, most of our coaches that we have on staff now are teachers, so they should be able to teach them too, so, uh, we, we want those students to come here and, and be a part of our school district, not only a part of our athletic program, so. And I feel really strongly about that, so I just, I just wanted to put that out there, and that's, that's my message that I'm, I am communicating, uh, to other ADs and, and other coaches that talk to me, so.
So who do we have co-ops with right now?
Currently, we are, uh, we do have something, uh, with, and I get the two private schools mixed up, so VCA, uh, we have some co-ops with, and, uh, and I'm drawing a blank right now, there's like four sports that we have with them.
So can I, can I add anything, because I know, I know we do cross country and track. We had done football for years, but we had eliminated that.
Yeah, because they, they moved us up a class. We do have boys and girls hockey, uh, because we, we had to go back and look, and it wasn't on the Minnesota High School League, uh, but, uh, Susan, Susie Hallenback. Susie Hallenbach was able to go back and find that, and we never dissolved that. So that is still in place with them. And so we will honor that. But we don't have anybody currently playing hockey right now from over there. So we also have Chisholm. We had an agreement with Cherry for wrestling, which we're going to look to dissolve, because right now, they had two wrestlers come over and they quit in the middle of the year, and we really don't have any participating, participation from there. I'm just trying to think who else. Truly, it's Chisholm, Cherry, and then the two private schools here in town.
So.
I did get approached to by, and I'm gonna forget the acronym, it's the new math technology school over by Mount Narin View.
You're at, you're at, it's strange.
Yeah. Yep. They wanted to co-op with us in some sports. And I said at this time, we weren't going to add any new ones. So.
I mean, when we only get one or two students from any of those four schools, it really doesn't pay for us to have a co-op, correct?
Not really, because then we have to still count, we don't count just the one student that comes here. We're counting their enrollment. So, yeah. So some people are under the assumption that if we just get that one student, that that's all that we're counting, is the one student that's coming to participate, but we're not. So that's what hurts us.
So if this is just for seventh and eighth grade, really, and they can only play the junior high and just not the varsity, realistically, how many of those seventh and eighth graders that have come over for that co-op have played varsity?
Probably not very many.
So this really wouldn't impact too many athletes that are currently, or, you know, currently playing at the younger levels right now that would be coming up to seventh and eighth?
No, it wouldn't. So, and it's not going to impact the agreement we have with the schools right now. We're going to honor that through the academic year of 24, 25, and then revisit it with our board and then our administration, probably early spring, because we would have to dissolve those sometime in April and May. At least acknowledge that with the Minnesota High School League. So if we're going to dissolve.
But now the VCA, they go all the way up to 12th grade, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So any student, nine through 12 of theirs, this won't affect at all, because this is strictly seventh and eighth that you're saying?
For right now, yes. So any agreements we have with them that have nine, nine through 12 right now, they'll still be able to participate with us this year if they're participating in any of those agreements. So they'll still be fine.
So Keith, we have an agreement with VCA for boys and girls hockey currently?
Yeah.
Do we have any athletes from there?
No.
So is that hurting our tier, because we have to count their enrollment?
No, it hasn't. If that, that one hasn't. But if they start to increase enrollment, yes, it would. It would move us up to two A.
So one, I mean, just, and this is for later discussion, but where this is all heading is, where do we stand on co-ops? Are we eliminating co-ops completely after this year? Are we keeping, I'm just, I'm talking aloud, I'm going to ask you, Keith.
Yes, no, no. But I, so this is, this is what I would come back and ask our board and present to our administrators. Is this where we want to be? And we could look at the pros and cons. And right now, I think that the pros would be that we would offer athletics to students in other districts. The cons would be that we're really not getting, gaining anything by offering that. We're giving away our services.
This has been going on for years, back and forth, so it changes all the time. We've been, we've talked about this the years I've been here. I guess the elephant in the room is, and it's always pointed towards our friends over here at Chisholm, is it really beneficial for us to have a co-op with them, especially now that they're building a new school? Nashville has got a new school. I mean, are we going to attract, and if you want to be in athletics or be in athletics and Hiving, then come to the school. I mean, it's open enrollment, so what's the hold?
The one thing that we really want to look at is, yeah, we're proud of our athletics and our activities, but probably the best thing that we have is our education here from K through 12. And why wouldn't you want to be here getting educated?
I've been on the block a long time now. This apartment's gone back and forth since I've been on here. And I've always been a firm believer that if you want to play for Hiving high school, football, hockey, basketball, whatever, then you should be a student. But enrollment is supposed to give off trophies to kids and allow them to come over here if they want to play. But, you know, it's our facilities, it's our staff that are doing the training, the coaches are all our, they're our staff, our payrolls. And we're all struggling for students. And if it brings us more students because they want to play sports, welcome. But you shouldn't be providing service to other districts. Wouldn't this whole benefit for us? And we're not even reimbursed for it.
Well, I mean, we just got done talking about community. I mean, I think this kind of takes that friendly community feel away when we're saying, we're basically forcing people to come. We're putting them in a hard position. And, you know, because we don't, because we're not getting anything. And is that community? I mean, I'm sure in some of our events that we've hosted, maybe even yesterday's, there's probably people that don't attend here that still do make a donation, come to the activities, volunteer, you know. I don't like that we are sitting here saying, we don't benefit, so we're going to kind of bully you into attending here. I don't like that. I don't feel like that is friendly. I don't think that's welcoming and saying, hey, come here. I mean, if that's the attitude we have, that isn't very friendly. But I completely understand that, you know, there, where it makes sense to do that, like with the seventh and eighth grade, because I feel like those athletes will not, they won't be penalized. You know, they'll still be able to enjoy. And I think, too, when people get a taste of, you know, being here, being on a Hiving team, that kind of does give them the experience of, oh, this is fun, this group is fun. I like what the inside of the school is, or my coach, who is a teacher. You know, now we're saying, you won't even get that opportunity to get that experience because you're not here right now.
But on the other hand, we don't want it to cost us anything. That's not a benefit cost ratio.
But if we look at how many students there completely is, is it really costing, I mean, it's not being propped against us.
Well, we could subsidize them, and we shouldn't be doing that. It's not that, it's a difficult, it's a balancing act. I understand where you're coming from.
So I want to get back to the understanding that, again, for our community, for the seventh and eighth graders, we want them to have that experience. So then they can make that choice if they want to be here or not. And I agree with you. We want this to be a welcoming and a friendly environment, and students to be here and understand that we want them to be part of our district.
Can I add really quick, Keith? Where Keith's coming from, and I won't say names, I won't say, but he was reached out from a neighboring school district that we don't have a co-op with, that one student wanted to come participate with us, and they wanted to create a co-op from a district that's 16 miles away. My answer to Keith on that one is if that student wants to play our sport, they should attend here. It's, no, we're talking, our community, we're talking, our people that live within the Hiving boundaries, I agree. That's a different conversation. But if you're, you just want to come here to participate in one program, one student, that puts a whole bunch of other things into play for us that complicates our program, complicates the issues for the coaches, complicates the practice. They do pay us. They do pay their, Keith will take, if there's 50 participants in the hockey program, they'll take the overall costs and send them back a bill for their share of that one student. They'll just divide by 50, the total costs.
Yeah.
They are paying their fair share, if you want to look at it that way. But I think we're talking about people outside of our community that want to access our programs. They want to benefit from that, but then go back to their other communities and benefit from the education that they're receiving here. And we're saying, come, come play, but you got to be our student. And the other, the other thing that, I mean, just to put it over there, Assumption is adding seventh grade next year, this coming school year. They have plans to add eighth grade. I don't know if their plans are to move on, but if you look at what's happening in Virginia with a 12th through 12th grade program at their Catholic, so that's having a major effect on their enrollment and their participation. I don't know, we're right across the street from Assumption. They're a competitor that's right across the block in a lot of ways. So I don't know, I don't know what the best answer is for community programming going forward after this year, but I think we got to have that discussion.
And that's why I came today, so.
So Keith, to clarify, you said, what, you said the seventh and eighth grade can participate in JV up to JV?
No, no, junior high.
Oh, junior high.
Junior high, yeah. I'm sorry if I...
Junior high, not JV?
No, no. JV would be part of that varsity.
One B squad?
Yeah. That would be B squad. No, so everything would be junior high. So, and what's considered or defined as junior high is seventh and eighth grade.
Okay. And is that just for non-public schools in our community, or would that be somebody from Chisholm wanting to come over?
We would still have to say yes and make an agreement with them. You know what I mean? So we would, we would still write something up. It's still, it's not called a co-op, and it's just an understanding. He gave me the definition of, it's just a, like a memorandum of understanding that you're just playing junior high.
But it could be somebody from Chisholm or Cherry or wherever. It doesn't just...
Yeah, but we still would have to give a, make an agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
How many co-ops do we have with, that Hiving has with other schools? Not them with us, but us with them? None?
None that I know of.
And not that, I'm thinking that we're an isolationist here. I do believe in the community. I do believe that there's possibilities for kids that want to come here. But if you want to come here and be in the athletics, with open enrollment, the way things are going, if you look down on Minneapolis, a kid will go play football at one school, and then he's playing basketball at another school, and he's playing baseball at another school. So there's no loyalty as far as, do you want to play for a winning team? And that's what it basically comes down to. So to me, if you want to come and you want to play athletics here and get a good education, make the decision to come here and let this be your school. Don't sit over at another school, get your not-so-good educational day. Get your education and then come sports here because we have a better hockey team. To me, that's not fair to the kids that are already here that are trying to make that team. And I guess, again, I'm not saying that we're not for the community, we are for the community, but let's worry about our district, our community, before we start worrying about what's going on there.
And I didn't want to open up that kind of world. I wanted to give you a communication so if you heard things out, that we were not honoring our commitments right now for, as far as our co-ops. And we are working with our community. That's why I was really looking into making sure that we still could have those seventh and eighth graders participate, but want to make sure that we communicate that it is the junior high level, that, you know, they're not going to be able to participate in at the varsity level or JV level.
And I did receive a communication about a scenario, and I asked the question, I mean, is that, how many of these students do we have that are, that reside in the Hiving school district and are open enrolling out? Are any, I mean, like, are any of these, and that person couldn't answer? The person I was talking to could not answer that question. But that's another factor.
Yeah. It is. So, again, I didn't want to cause any controversy. I wanted you to have a good...
Keep much more to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I gave you information. And again, like Kim was saying, the Burger Bash was the idea of Kate Braun and Matt Anderson and Mr. Roy Casey and some Jen Toohey and some other parents. And, yeah, they did a great job. And I think it's a little bit more than $2,500. I brought the proceeds up and Pam had to recount my numbers. But, yeah, so we're, and I think we have some more money that's going to be coming in. But, and you're right. So the new, even the new car wash in town, so the new car wash in town, it sends us a check. We get a portion of everybody that gets a membership. And the check that we got this month was $700. And all we have to do is, you know, say that we support the car wash. I have a membership. And I take, my truck needs to go through there again. But, yeah, so, and the month before that, I think the check was like $500. So those are some proceeds that we'll be putting in there. And we are trying to be creative with doing some different fundraising, because I know the cost. And Alex told me to look at that transportation stuff. And the bottom line is, we're going to have to look at, it'll be, because it's not only athletics, so it's all of our activities. Because our drama travels, speech travels, so all those costs come into that pot. So we're just going to have to be pretty creative. I know this spring with softball, we sent all of our teams on one bus. Junior high, softball, and baseball traveled together to Bemidji on one bus, again, to keep the cost down. So we are aware of that, and we try to do what we can to on our end to keep that cost down for our district, but still give our students that experience of being in athletics and activities.
Just like I say again, congratulations on Hockey Day in Minnesota, the participation. Personally, I know maybe it's not appropriate here, but I'd like to send our condolences out to our head coach's family. Go ahead, Boston, their family here.
And we have, along with that, we're going to have Friday Night Hockey. We're going to be playing Herman Town here. And that's, it's in January, we'll get more stuff out, but we're going to try to fill that arena. And Herman Town's going to be bringing a bunch of fan buses. And I hope to be able to turn them away and say, no, there's no seats left, because we've already filled it up.
A preview before the state tournament, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I coached way too long to do any predictions, so.
So you're reselling tickets for Hiving fans?
Yeah, we'll, we'll give them away, so keep the Herman Town fans out. Is this on camera? No, I'm kidding.
Related to activities, I want to, I want to acknowledge, because I know we talked about some of it is elementary school. Our PTOs do a good job in terms of fundraising and contributing to offsetting costs of transportation when they go to Hiving and take the elementary kids. They work hard at that, so.
And then I'll get out of here, because I talked way too much. Next Wednesday, we're going to have our Activities Fair. We'll have all of our activities down there. We'll have the tables for them. So from drama to speech to hockey to football, everybody will have a table. And parents will be able to come in, more so for the parents that will have incoming seventh graders or students that have transferred in. And then our coaches will do their parent meetings for fall sports and fall activities, also that evening next Wednesday. So we'll have an ice cream truck and a bouncy house for little kids. Or if you're a big kid that likes a bouncy house.
Last year, you and I were talking at the end of the school year about the dollar months. And you were working with some other ADs. Did that already, did you get that worked out, or is that still a work in progress?
Which dollar?
For like those away trips when they go to state or the meals?
Yeah. So I compiled that, and I was going to talk to Alex. So I can tell you right off the top of my head, the changes that happen within our conference. So Grand Rapids is communicating that they're no longer getting student athletes money when they go to the state tournament. Right now, on the average, in our conference, for breakfast, our conference gives their student athletes $15 for breakfast, and then it's like 20 bucks for lunch, and then 25 for supper. And then if it's a full team, then they're creative, and they'll do, the coaches will do something where they'll stay at a hotel and they'll have a breakfast, and then they'll do a lunch, like they'll do a buffet. They won't give the kids money, but they'll pay for a buffet, and then they'll give them money for supper.
So that is an increase then from what?
What? Oh, yeah. Ours is way, ours is the lowest.
Like $8, $12, and 15, or something like that?
Yeah. Ours is the lowest in the state. I hate to say that. But we're better than Rapids right now. They're not giving anything. But, yeah, so I was going to go to Alex and ask for an increase. So my thought process in the increase is, I was going to ask for $12, 15, and 20 for our student athletes. And we could talk through it. I didn't want to throw this out. I didn't want to throw this out there now, but I was gonna come and talk to you.
And then the other question is about the photography contract. Was, did you figure that out?
We still haven't found out. There's nothing in the books for why we have the two photographer, or why we go back and forth with those two.
So at this time, since it sounds like there isn't a contract, they, they can, people can go to whatever photographer they want?
If our, if our, if our coaches chose to go somewhere else, we really don't have anything in place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're good.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, guys. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Okay, with that, the board of committee reports. Hearing none, the board of committee... It implies a motion to approve the agenda. Move by Director Egan, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we'll move to Motion, er, item six, Motion to approve consent agenda.
Oh, support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we'll move to the Ministry of Business, item seven. Turning it over to Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Ed has a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations, including $250 from Detroit Diesel for Lego Robotics, $3, $3,500 from Detroit Diesel to support career academies, and $500 from Detroit Diesel to support student services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed has a motion to approve payment number one to Lancy Enterprises in the amount of $99,845 for work completed on the cheaper field toilet room upgrade.
So moved.
Moved by Director Martin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
Do they anticipate completion of everything before the first meeting?
Good, I was out there today. Looks great. They're close, and the contractors I talked to, Tyler there, they, they think we're gonna be ready for, I think it's August 29th is the first meeting, so yes.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed C has a motion to approve payment number two to Lancy Enterprises in the amount of $254,375 for work completed on the cheaper field toilet room upgrade.
So moved.
Support by Director Polter, excuse me, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed D has a motion to approve payment number two to Nelson Murphy in the amount of $48,564 for work completed on the Lincoln Elementary Rebuilds project.
So moved.
Support by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
Alex?
I was coming.
I think there's a few more left here.
Okay.
13,000 left.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed D has a motion to approve the food service management contract with Ina Inc. effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Support by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed F has a motion to approve a purchase of service agreement between St. Louis County and ISD number 701 for the transportation of children and youth in foster care placement for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2026.
All both.
Support.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
Is this costing to the district in transportation?
Well, so, so what the situation is, is that if we have, let's say if we had a student that attended here, let's say at the Lincoln, and for whatever reason, they, they're placed foster care placement out of the area, this agreement, the county will help us with some of those costs. It doesn't cover all the costs, but it's about keeping some continuity for that child during difficult times, so that's something that we've always tried to support. But they, they do recoup about half of our costs, but it's, it's not a full recoup. But I think, I think it's just the right thing to do in this situation, you know?
I agree. I'm not questioning that. It's just, you're talking about all these transportation costs, and does it end up costing us?
Doesn't seem right, yeah.
It, it does end up costing us. It, it does.
Significantly, no?
Well, it just depends on the scenario. If it's, you know, the placement, sometimes the placements are just short, maybe three, four days or a week. Could be more extensive. They're more extensive. Nine times out of 10, those students do attend at their own district because the placement family also just wants some continuity in their neighborhood and their, where they're living. But it's pretty rare, too, that we have many instances. I think last year, there was two situations where this contract came into play, and neither of them extended beyond a week or a week and a half.
So it's not a wide range?
It, it isn't. And again, I just, you know, we, we're, a lot of times, I'll get those conversations or get those calls from, from the foster care family, or the parents involved, and their, their life is in turmoil at that time. They're just looking for some continuity for their child.
Generally, when kids are placing foster care, they have to, we place them in their home school system, if at all possible. We've done it a couple of times, but, yeah, it's that continuity. You want your child the entire life to be in our home place.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed G has a motion to approve the professional service agreement between North Hope D and ISD number 701 for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Ed H has a motion to approve co-secondary and optional program agreement between Minnesota North College and ISD number 701 for the 2024, 2025 school year.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Martin. Any discussion?
Is this the same contract that you've got?
I think the rate may have changed lately. It's not much, but the, all the credits that we're charging, everything's the same as we've had in the past.
And the rate is under a formula based on reimbursement rate or any other rate? So it's the same rate that we would get reimbursed, or that this college would get reimbursed if we worked under contract?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Chair, I don't have to stay because I work for this sort of college.
Samuel, move it in a minute. Okay, thank you.
Item I is a motion to approve the letter of engagement with Sterling Company for the fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Director Egan, supported by Director McGlaughlin.
Sorry.
I just wanted to see your...
Well, I guess ladies first. You wanted to...
Yeah, either way, it's all good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
You'd like me to read these out?
Items G, ooh, what are we looking at? P, P, P. Are policies that have been updated by the MSBA and, we've looked at them, and they don't require a first reading since that's been done before, but I think we'll just have Alex go through policy 202 and just state what it is, like that, for time's sake. And they're all on our website, any of them.
They, they are, yes.
I did just request from Mr. Aldrich that if going forward, if Trina could put that name of that on the policy rather than the number.
Move.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, thank you.
And I think she has the task, because there's so many of them.
Alex, do you just want this stat to have?
Sure.
You get extra credit, Trina.
Item J is motion to approve policy number 102, civil education opportunity. Item K is motion to approve policy numbers 204 and 207, school board meeting times and public hearing. Item L is motion to approve policy number 408, 417, and 418, harassment, harassment and violence policy, drug-free workplace, and tobacco-free environment, possession of use of tobacco, and tobacco-related devices, and electronic delivery devices, vaping awareness and prevention instruction. Item M is a motion to approve policy number 505, 506, 506.5, 508, 510, 513, 514, 515, 517, 518, 521, and 522, student discipline, corporal punishment, school resource officers, school-sponsored student publication activities, enrollment of non-resident students, student promotion retention and programs designed, protection and privacy of pupil records, student medication, student disability non-discrimination, Title IX sex non-discrimination policy, grievance procedure and process, bullying prohibition, use of peace officers and racist teams to remove students with IEDs from school grounds. Item N is a motion to approve policy number 601, 603, 604, 606, 607, 608, 609, 613, 614, 615, 617, and 619, school district curriculum and instructional goals, curriculum development, instructional curriculum, textbooks, instructional materials, and library materials, internet technology itself, when it's up for use, instructional services, special education, religion and religious and cultural services, school district accommodability system, staff development and rendering, online instruction, credit for learning, graduation requirements. Item O is a motion to approve policies number 706 and 707, transportation of public school students, transportation of non-public school students. And item P is a motion to approve policy number 804 and 805, crisis management policy for high school in Lincoln, and crisis management policy for Greenaven and Washington.
Is there a motion to accept all these? All in favor? The chair will second it. Moved by Director Polter, supported by Chair Berkeley. Any discussion?
I have one quick one. I don't know if it's, does this, I can't remember which policy it is, but Title IX with the federal law, does that affect us here?
It does. You know, we, we've had to go through some training for that, but the real, the real change is on the, in the past, you had to identify different roles through the administration that would handle complaints, and then there was a process for that. It kind of streamlined that process a little bit, where myself, named in this policy as our human rights officer, can make more decisions and more recommendations by myself, rather than the, it, it, it's not really gonna affect our process, it's gonna actually streamline it for me a little bit, is the way that I look at it, so...
I guess what I'm looking at is the participation in Title IX for the individual sport, the gender that is allowed to participate in that sport.
Transgender.
According to the federal law...
I think that's a feature.
Well, according to the federal law, if you don't allow transgender or whoever to participate in the sport of their choice, whether it be male or female, you're gonna lose track of them.
Okay.
Now, how far am I wrong? I can, that's understanding how you have it.
I, I don't think it would be a money, I mean, it could potentially be a money thing if you're sued.
Right.
I think it's more about discrimination and more about...
So that would be up to you?
Yes. Well, it would start with me.
Start with you.
It would start with me, and then there's definitely a process that we have to follow, but...
And until then, we thought the world is a journey.
It is.
And then I have a question about the cell phone. I don't think it actually ties into this policy. I thought I read somewhere, but it could be, maybe it's for not this school year, but the next school year, regarding just our cell phone policy. Isn't there something that we have to provide the state with, you know, are we allowing, are we not allowing? Is that part of this, or is that a little bit different?
So the, by March of 2025, every school district in the state has to have a board approved cell phone policy. Our, our, we met yesterday as administrative team, and we think what we're doing here in the district is working. And I, I would bring that recommendation forward to you, that our current practice would be reflected in that policy, is what the plan is, unless things were to change, you know, between now and then. Yes, we do have to have a, a cell phone policy before March of 25, but it's not today, so...
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
All these are small changes, but it's gonna have to get reflected through the entire student handbooks and all that sort of stuff.
That's why, that's why we, you know, we're in such a rush to get these to you today, so the principals and the other administrators have time to get that in play, and then bring the handbooks to you, you know, prior to the start of school. So that's, that's part of the reason why the quick need to get this done.
So if I remember right, we approved the handbooks, but we don't really have to. Or is it?
I'd have to, I'd have to find out. I, I believe we do have to have, in some requirement, we have to have a handbook.
Trying to keep track of all these little requirements is unbelievable, though.
Well, that's a good point. Is, is there a deadline that we have to change a policy by? Any policy?
Handbook policy.
Three days or what? No, yeah, no, no. These, Director Martin says it's gonna take some time. Are we up against a deadline? It's our own deadline for the...
For the handbook.
And, but, yes, I don't know if there's any, and I don't think we, well, we can do it as best we can, keep moving.
Many, many of the, many of these policies by state statute are already in effect.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
They, August 1 was many of them, or they took, July 1 was some of the dates for these in here that it took effect, so we're actually after the fact. But, but that can't be helped. I mean, they, it was thrown at you in the beginning of June, MSBA did their work, and, but, yeah, it's...
Delete that from the TV in a minute.
One thing I have to say, though, is looking online for the student handbooks and the policies is way easier than I've ever seen it before.
Awesome.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we'll move to item B, discuss the items. Very quick, see none there? And say that way?
Well, just if, if I could quickly throw one thing to ask about is, I, I just would like to have, potentially do a working session before, after the next meeting. One, to talk about my goals as superintendent, and we talked about that last time. But the other one, I'd like to just share with you and then be able to have a, a public conversation is, if we want to move forward with a referendum for November of '25, if it's something that we're gonna do, we have to start laying the groundwork and getting it set up and announcing where we're at, and what we, what we would ask the public to approve, we need to come to some agreement on that, so...
Put something together that I can go over and then go from there.
So would you, would you like to have a working session prior to the next meeting or after? That would be the only thing I...
Why don't you throw an email through the question board? Any dates or something that would work and...
Okay.
You can come up with something. Director Martin had something first.
No, I was that.
Oh, okay.
I have a question. How is our role looking?
It's hard, it's hard to say. It's, I want to be positive. It looks good. I mean, things look good. We, you know, today, we're up about 30 at high school from where we were last year. We're up about 16 at Lincoln, pretty much steady at the two elementary buildings, but it's, it's, it's too early to tell. I mean, well, some of our families don't make those decisions until the week before school starts, so... But today, things are looking promising. They really are. We've had a number of students return. That's, that's what I noticed, a number of students that had left. For whatever reason, there was some names that I recognized that were returning, which I think is awesome, so...
I wonder, do you have it virtual academy?
We are up, up and running. I talked to Chad about that today. He just, he had another, he said he's full, he told me today, because he had another student enrolled just yesterday, a senior. enrolled just yesterday, a senior. So he told me the program was full, so he must be communicating that to the people that are involved. But yeah, we're up and running and ready to go. Yes.
I like the billboards that I've seen that say academics first.
Thank you.
That looks nice.
After reading the paper last week, I'm thinking we should probably get a billboard up by Mount Mary.
And we, service co-ops will have one.
Service co-op, there you go.
Well, there is a billboard right outside of Mount Mary, it's on the local vendor in town, so.
Oh.
It's a lot of time.
Electronic, yeah, that's a nice one. Could do that. Director Volter?
Volter adjourned.
Without objection, meetings adjourned. It's five o'clock. And thank everybody for coming here and meetings adjourned.